Proof of posting, copy of this notice was delivered on seven twenty-two. It was faxed to Star News, posted at the municipal building here at the post office, Black Earth, and on the webpage, www/blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed to the State Bank of Cross Plains, Black Earth branch. Item four, discussion action, utility budget.
Not Mitch, I should probably do a roll call.
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah. Hudson?
Yes.
Koyel?
Yes.
Captain?
Yes.
Lutrando?
Yes.
And we have Justin Bramerson, Moyer, and Mussum.
All right, discussion action on electric utility budget. Let's see. So there isn't going to be budget set truly in quite a while, right?
Yep, we did not pass a budget last year either. None of the utilities did.
So I guess it's, I don't think we're going to get a budget tonight because I've got, still got more questions than answers, but maybe we can talk through a bunch of them and just figure out what's that or where we're going and what we're doing, so. Right now, you want to do a quick overview?
Of what I have?
Yeah.
Okay. So sure, the proposed two thousand twenty-two budget that you have on your electric fund is just that. I made mention for the last village board meeting that I adjusted the proposed numbers, at least on the revenue side, based on the first six months of real activity on the revenue. My proposed budget previous to that included a rate increase that we were expecting within the first quarter of the year that has not happened yet. Currently, that rate increase is being projected as six and a half percent rate of return, and the PSC is in their process of doing a financial analysis to see how that is going to shake out for each rate class. We still don't have any numbers for that. It's just proposed, your expenses, of course, are just that, based on historic. When I do budget, I usually try to mark it up at least at three percent, if not higher, just depending on what's going to be going on. Or soft, just a guide for us to start to.
I guess in your budget... Are you treating this as cash flow or are you treating this more like an income expense?
An income.
Okay. But we're budgeting off kind of a cash. Do this like as a cash flow or...
I do all the utilities the same. If it needs to change, you guys need to let me know what you want to be changing on here.
I guess I just don't think that, I mean, if we're budgeting, shouldn't it be like, or probably should budget off a cash flow, right?
Well, when I talked to the auditor about it, I mean, this is looking at the revenues and the expenses. They don't want to see assets and liabilities put into here, so if that's something we want to add, that's going to obviously change the way this looks completely. I don't know what that would look like, but.
It seems like whatever you have, I, at least to me, I would appreciate seeing a cash flow budget, even if it's in addition to this, just because I think you'd want to know where, can you actually afford the expenses that you're going to be incurring this year? And I don't think, and I think you'll agree, Shelley, this one isn't going to portray that bottom line.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out too, bottom line. And, and, so I've got a bunch of information that I've requested that I've gotten, and I've gone over a bunch of it, and I still have a bunch of questions. And the only thing I don't have is, I asked for a line energy bills for twelve months. I asked for Vanguard bills for twelve months. I asked for administrative costs in that for twelve months. And I asked for income, or billing, what we billed for twelve months, so I can kind of say, hey, where's the cash flow at? I don't have the income yet or the billable for twelve months.
That's what, so act, if you look at last year, wouldn't that be what we billed? Or what we billed?
There's...
Yeah.
So that's, but that's not all of the money though, right?
This is tied to our civic system, so anytime we pay a bill or anytime we bring in revenue, it is tied to this report. It filters right in anytime we update that general ledger. So your revenues and your expenses in here are actual.
So what it costs us for me?
Even after audit for previous years now, at this point, for two thousand twenty-one and past, even after audit, those are the real numbers after any adjustment.
Yeah, but there's depreciation, everything into this, right?
Yeah.
I'm looking for cash flow and where we're at. That, this doesn't show me that.
But that's not going to show up on the, it's not on a budget. Cash flow is not going to show up on a budget. Cash flow is going to show up on a cash flow.
I'm trying to figure out the, the status of our utility.
Yeah.
As much as budget, right?
Right.
That needs to be number one.
Yeah.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that, but I think that at that point now, we need to separate those two things out. We need cash flow, yes, I agree with that before, and I think we need that before we do any further, any further budgeting.
Right.
However, do you want to make it clear that the budgeting does not, you know, is not going to show that because that's not part of a budgeting process?
I do.
But it would be nice to see that.
Yeah, well, I, I...
I mean, it is needed to see that because I, I can look at these numbers and you can tell me what they're for, but I'm not going to make an informed decision.
Yeah, it, it, and the reason I was asking is, I really want to understand the status of our utility.
Right.
Not just the budget, right? So...
And that's something we've been struggling with four years, right? And since before, when I was on the board before, we struggled with that whole, where were we at? And that's when you were, at that point, Shelley, you were fixing.
Yeah.
We're splitting everything out like it, like it originally should have been when it was all purchased, right? And that's all done. And so now if we do the cash flow, we can get an accurate look, right? So that we know where we're headed. I mean, I guess we don't, the six and a half percent.
Rate of return now, it doesn't...
Yeah, I, you know, but that's going to, it's going to reflect in my bill and your, you know, wherever it's billed within town. But then on your bill, you also have that, that adjustment, you know? So if we do this increase, is that adjustment going to go down? That we purchase, of the energy we have to purchase from somewhere else?
So long as a line, a line doesn't change their, I mean, they always got fluctuating rates, so you probably will always have a PCA rate. But it won't be nearly as high once, after you have a rate increase, because that should be covering that difference, because a line just had a huge rate increase.
Right.
So that, that is, PCA C is covering for that.
Okay, so and that's...
But there's demand, there's a bunch of different things going under, so it may be a little bit one way or the other, but it shouldn't be nearly what it has been.
Right.
That's my answer. I'd like to see that number down. If it were to increase anywhere else, I want to see that number come down. And then you're just going to have to tell me how we're going to, how you would want to do this. In my opinion, you're the experts here, not me, so you tell me what you want to say.
And we'll gladly tell you that, but I, I mean, one thing I will say, we did give you guys kind of a printout, just so everybody kind of understands what we, what we do as Vanguard.
So this is just Vanguard's budget?
Well, yeah, oh, no, and then we all work together.
They're a company though, not, you're not for us, right?
No, but we're here to help.
That's what we're here for, a hundred percent, because we are...
It's only set up to be a pass-through organization with no profits.
But we are here to help, that's number one.
But they make a profit, don't you?
They don't make a profit.
Not really, no. We cover our expenses and that's about it.
The vehicle would be the only way we profit, and that shouldn't be the whole vehicle fund.
Correct, yep.
Where's that one, the vehicle case? That's what we're here. So we got the rate of return, right, from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So we show...
But they don't do it through...
And this is based off of the PSC annual reports.
Okay, and do you agree with these? I mean, you're trying to, you're giving that information to them, is that right?
We do not give that information.
We provide some of the expenses for them, but as far as where it goes after that, I can't answer to that and how it gets plugged into the PSC report. We don't have any part in that.
That's our audit firm.
And we've noticed some diff, kind of discrepancies on the numbers that we give from what's actually on the report.
Right.
How does that happen?
I don't know.
Well, we did go through an audit change, what I found during the PSC rate case, and I actually had to go back to two thousand and sixteen and found it, but there was some plant activity that wasn't recorded in the correct area. When that started was in two thousand nineteen, and that's when we did the switch from the audit firms, because Wagner got out of government audits, and when Whitley picked it up, they just copied what Wagner had. It was in that last year Wagner had a, that they put some stuff in the wrong line, they didn't have plant recorded correctly. We're going to have to go back in and redo some of our annual reports to get it corrected. I'll have to work with the auditing firm to do that. As far as the rate case goes, it was about a twenty-seven thousand dollar difference, which isn't enough to impact a percent of rate of return.
Still embarrassing.
Yeah, it is, absolutely, especially when I spent how many hours on the phone in the PSC and trying to...
On the rate case too, I mean, it seems like every, there are multiple different lines on that sheet that they, the PSC had to correct. Why didn't Bridget catch this? I mean, is that her job?
It is her job, and that is something, I would not use that firm again.
Well, and, you know, she talks about that six and a half percent rate of return, that's not enough. You, you still have a sixty thousand dollar net operating loss.
I know, and that's not from Bridget, that's coming directly from the public service.
Yep.
So, and I am very concerned.
What's she going to do about it?
That's something that when we have our public hearing with the public service on our rate case, that we express that concern. The six and a half percent rate of return plus the cash adder, I don't know.
How much?
She had a fifty-five thousand dollar cash adder in it, right? They didn't even touch that. And that fifty-five thousand, that really doesn't do shit either.
I agree.
So we lost money in two thousand twenty-one, according to this, right? We lost twenty-six, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seven, but our sales were up, and so energy cost was up too. So how do we compare those two years, like, how do we compare two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one? We'll probably need to total kilowatts sold for each year, right? So... I mean, the sales are up, but how much of it is energy cost? Why did we make money in two thousand twenty and not two thousand twenty-one?
There could also be a difference in how you class Vanguard's expenses, because if you're putting more of it into O and M, then it's going to affect your income statement, it's going to look like you lost money, whereas if we're putting more into capital projects, it's going to go into an asset, it's going to look like the utility's in a better position. So that can make a huge difference on your bottom line, is how you're classing Vanguard's expenses.
And at the end of the year, we give you guys a report of how to cla, or what, what accounts to classify things in. So back in two thousand seventeen, this, this whole system got revamped. I mean, there's, we put a pile of time, pile of money into this to try to make this simple, and it ain't working. But, like, we, we provide reports per account, and Lydia can explain it better because she's the one that provides it. But, I mean, it, it should be fairly cut and dry, for the most part, of what dollar amount is getting put in on capital, expenses and stuff from us, or the PSC, and somehow it's still wrong.
The land that reported given over to me at the end of the year, we have the accounts that get hit on that, and you'll notice that, um...
Construction work in progress.
Yeah, that gets adjusted based on her entries. Only account that we see on the expense portion that gets hit right now, the rest of them are on the...
I guess my biggest concern is like, we went back, we, let me give it to you guys. I mean, do you look at August twenty-first, or August the twenty-one, we're a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in the black, the next month we're five hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Why? And, and now we're seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
August of twenty-one, that's when that loan came in, that we did that new borrowing, and when it comes in, it reflects in, and then it goes out in the following month of September as we paid off the other loans with the money. We paid off the loan, the old loan, with the money.
Makes sense. That, that should have helped us financially.
Paid off an old debt.
Yeah, but we incurred a new one, right?
Correct.
So the future of that will save us money in the future.
But the new debt we incurred was basically this refinancing of the old ones, which we still have it.
Yeah, we reflect this.
We reflect on cash.
Let's, right, helps.
The annual report?
Yeah.
It shows the kilowatt hours, what we can purchase power.
So this, this form right here, but this form that we've got from Shelley, and it shows the actual expenses from two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one, and to six thirty of two thousand twenty-two. Okay, so that means that all of the numbers that you gave from Shelley in your system flowed into Shelley, the Shelley system, or not Shelley, but the government, the village 's system, right? And then the expenses all show that Shelley paid, or for the village, what the village paid out, correct? And do you see all of those expenses then chewing your system, Lydia?
Um, it's very difficult to trace, and I think Shelley and I even talked about this, where if I look up an account in my system, I would assume it would look the exact same on Shelley's statement and the exact same on the PSCs, and that's not the case. So it's very difficult to say, are all the expenses from Vanguard being transferred correctly? I can't, I don't know.
But the numbers don't match, no matter how you...
We don't have the same accounting numbers that Lydia uses though either.
I think you're supposed to though, right?
Well, we had accounts that were already pre-existing in the system before Lydia and the whole system came up, and we were talking to Zach about changing those. He didn't want us to go through and alter all of these account numbers and set up new ones.
So that's just an account number thing?
Yeah, it is.
That's fine, but that number somewhere should, you should be able to say, okay, Lydia's account number is this, but that's...
Well, it should be a correlating account to construction work in progress, to all these account numbers.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that those numbers are not the same from yours to the village's. And the difference would be the overhead that, that we...
We would need to sit down and look at which numbers aren't right, because I think we discovered there was one year that the numbers were accurate, other than the construction work in progress, which was, it was all from the entries you gave at the end of the year, but then there's another year where it's not in line.
Right.
And to find that, we'll have to print a detailed ledger to see where they go.
Between, sorry, between mine and yours, that was the case, and then I think it also needs to be done between mine, yours, and the PSC, just to make sure the whole process is...
There's definitely a void.
Is Lisa's having the same trouble?
No.
I don't know that this, they go through it like it does either. I don't know what they have.
We give them the same, we give them the same exact stuff we give you guys. I mean, it is in the same form, same account numbers, that's the reason that we did this originally, put in our civic and our accounting system and our inventory and all that, so we can provide consistency to both villages, because that was back in the day a hell of a problem. But, you know, I, I don't know what the hell's going on.
So you're clear with me, that everything's the same, your numbers match?
Um, I don't, I don't even, I don't look at their numbers, I guess it's just, they're not having financial problems, I haven't even looked at it.
Okay, so they're not having financial problems?
I don't know.
I mean...
I said, I don't know that.
No, they're in pretty good shape. And granted, they got a different, different customer base, that you have some more industrial than you guys. I mean, to be, yeah, that makes a difference.
And they don't have rural, yeah.
But you, you know, you guys are buying less power, but you have less expense. I mean, that's, less purchased power.
Well, is that the case though when we carry the rural? You know, and you guys, maintenance has got to be done on the rural.
Of course, you got more maintenance, yep.
I'm not saying, I mean, I want, I, you know, where, where we're at right now, you know, we do seem, it does seem like we're struggling, but I think we're a hell lot better than we were ten years ago or five years ago.
Oh, yeah.
When nobody knew what, what columns, anything went in.
I remember...
What I wanted to know is, do you have the problem tracking your numbers with Mezzo that you have with us? Because if it's only us that, you know, we're having a problem figuring out why our numbers, our expenses don't match, do your expenses move soon? Then we need to figure out why. But if Mezzo's having that same problem, then it's, then do we go back to the, to the C, CCA, and say, hey, what is this? Why is there this difference?
Do work, maybe on their account every year.
I mean, yeah, I provide the same entry as they provide Black Earth, do I go and look at their PSC report and track my accounts to theirs? I don't know that I've done that. Yeah, we can definitely take over.
Absolutely.
You, you just understand what I'm saying.
No, absolutely.
We need to figure out where the problem is.
If there's a problem.
If there's a problem, if there's a problem.
Yeah. You know, I just, I look at, you know, the, the treasurer's report, and we look at, you know, January of twenty-two, you know, we're down fifty-eight thousand, the next month we're down two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and shit, next thing you know, we're seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in the hole. Why? Why? Don't understand.
You guys see the bills that we're paying.
I know, but there's got to be numbers, I mean, we see this number, but there's no numbers to back it. I don't understand where the hell all this money is going.
So I will tell you that this utility has never been out of the hole since I've been here.
Well, where's it going? That's what bothers me the most, like, we have no proof, no idea where the hell it's going.
I'd love to tell you that some of that was in part through the embezzlement, but I can't tell you that for sure, because when I went back...
That was ten years ago. Then we look at revenue, and you were...
I understand, but that she sold from Vanguard as well, which we paid those bills, plus we paid her.
And Bakers have ever been paid back for that.
But it's not, it's not all of that. I don't, I can't answer that, I wasn't here back then to determine why it was in the hole.
So where did this number come from then, though?
It's carryover from year after year. I can pull you my treasurer's reports from back in two thousand fourteen, when it was created, and we were two hundred thousand dollars in the hole around the end of the year.
I believe that, but I mean...
We take out...
We did, in two thousand...
Yeah, we took out a loan.
We did.
To fill up that embezzlement and to get rid of that.
We did.
Would pay back the water sewer, water sewer.
Right?
Which passed that to the utilities.
The electric and sewer borrowed a million dollars in two thousand seventeen, five hundred and eighty-four thousand of that was electric to pay back the general fund, because the general fund, just as it is today, is paying the bills, as well as the sewer was. And our auditors came in and said, you got to take care of that. That's why we did that borrowing. We still have the bills to pay every single month.
But either way, on the past, you look at December of, or sorry, January of twenty-two, we're fifty-eight thousand dollars down that month from the previous. The next month, we're two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Like, that's not the past, that's the present.
And that could be related to that.
I mean, we have to, what's your average revenues for a month? About two hundred thousand roughly?
Hmm, a little less than that.
So a lot more than our total revenues for the month. That doesn't make sense to me.
Doesn't make sense to me either.
And I'm sorry, but, I mean, none of us are utility accountants, but...
And then you go from February to March, then we increase by another eighty-nine thousand.
Yep, to a total negative.
To a negative still.
Right? So it can even be, I don't even think that it can be from a month to month, month ended on Thursday, and we pay this bill on Monday, so I don't, so I guess, you know, at that point, I agree with that.
In the month of February, we have a debt payment that gets made on the electric utility. Five thousand in total, that's the premium of electric, and five is electric, fifty thousand is... That's your big jump in the month of February.
But we're still losing damn near a hundred thousand dollars per month. I mean, that's fifty percent of our revenue, total revenue, even on months that we don't have debt payments on. Don't get it. That's something we got to find out. I mean, that, to me, is like, we're going to keep going, next thing you know, we're a million, I mean, shit, since August of twenty-one, we're a million dollars in the hole?
If it's that severe, general fund wouldn't be able to keep up with it.
Well, that's, I, yeah, because general fund is covered, right?
Yep.
We looked at revenues, I mean, the revenues per the PSC report, I mean, I understand COVID, but they weren't down.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, I'm, right now, I'm looking at two thousand twenty-one, peak and off peak. And I, I can't, I don't have two thousand nineteen to compare them to, so I don't, this year they're way up compared to what they were, right?
And we did talk to Brian Hood too, for what it's worth, um, last three months for everybody, demand has been really high, because all the heat, like, we're having, they're having, you know, three, four days of high heat. Demand is based off your highest load at a certain amount of time, so with having that high heat, and everybody coming home and slamming on their air conditioners, that's just nature of the beast.
I have, I have every year.
And granted, our large power customers do have demand as well, which your residential is going to that.
No.
They, as far as a line, they bill, they bill on demand as well. I'd say that's a ton of hours purchased.
But they still fluctuate their billing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're still...
Question, yeah.
We're paying more.
When you look at...
We're paying more.
But your resupply of the PCA is almost all of it.
Electric failed by March is reflected in your twenty-ninth...
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question for you. From your work orders and billing, it says Vanguard purchases this inventory and charges it off their work orders, and you currently have about two hundred thousand in inventory. That means you have two hundred thousand sitting in inventory in your shop. Who pays for that? Okay, so then that flows through to us?
Not unless we use it in Black Earth. That is strictly, that on our books, not yours.
Right. Should be.
Okay, but, so you're telling us, I mean, I guess, that you have enough operating cash to have a two hundred thousand dollar inventory, but we're down five hundred thousand that's due to us, due to the village?
You know, how much, two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars with the inventory is?
I know, I'm not...
One big, no, one big, one big transformer is a hundred and forty-two thousand. I mean, it's literally, and wire, this should, we have to have on hand in case there's an emergency or something like that.
No, I understand what inventory is, I get that. I'm asking then, that's the cash at hand, I guess I want to know why we're so far down every month. We're not, you know, I always thought that we were down that far because we didn't have any money, so we were, you know, you were always operating in negative, so we had to pay the bills, so the general fund is always paying the bills, but if, that's not the case?
Vanguard, not, I mean, the only thing that you guys pay for us is off our monthly billing. There's nothing, and that's theoretically in and out, because we build based off our time spent here. So on average, we're about sixty percent of our time is spent in Black Earth, forty percent in Mezzo. So for every hour that we work here, the guys keep track of their time, keep track of the material, their trucks, and then we bill for that, for whatever actual time is spent. Then we go up in Mezzo, we do the same exact thing in Mezzo.
But you're always getting paid, right? I mean, you're always getting money, no matter if you're there, say you guys don't have any work today to, in Black Earth or Mezzo, would you guys still get paid?
There's always work to do in one or the other, though.
I, I mean, you're always getting, you're always getting money, you're never sitting down.
Depending on what village we're in, yes. We have to.
Yeah, we have to pay them.
Then you're not going to have any utility. I mean, what are you going to, you're going to go on your own outages? I mean, I, I do...
Yeah.
You guys are very, very lucky. I mean, you guys only pay for a, a line crew sixty percent of the time. You guys are very, very lucky. I mean, you guys only pay for a, a line crew sixty percent of the time. I mean, most of these villages have more employees than us on their line crew. And they're.
There are a lot of villages that have their own companies now. Most of it's line and, I mean.
There's eighty-two municipalities in the state that have the electric.
I just wanna bring out that one utility was in Superior Straits back in two thousand fourteen and fifteen. I brought up to Pat, of course, that we needed to really look at this utility, cause I didn't know if it was viable to keep it. At that time Vanguard. Yep, Vanguard did. They brought in Boardman and Clark to do a feasibility study, and it was presented in front of the Vanguard Commission in twenty sixteen. And it was recommended that the utility be cut. They laid out some different options. They laid out some capital plans and.
I remember that cause a, a line came.
Sure, yep.
And what, how much years, how much did, how much did Vanguard gone up, uh, what, what it cost us?
Well, what I wanna note here is that portion of the feasibility study outlined that if we were going to keep that, additional considerations in funding construction projects included the village issuing long-term debt and getting additional funding to offset those projects, and we have never done that.
We've never done that.
Right.
It never went any farther than down there in the line saying, if we're not gonna buy you.
Correct, but in the meantime, you know.
They still have their.
Shaun is moving through the project, and we have expenses, and we're not borrowing to pay for it.
And so that.
My projects are based off of budgets, which, I mean.
Yeah, but your budget outlines the projects that were put in there. You just pick and choose which ones you're gonna be working on for that year. Is that correct?
Yes, based off of whatever budget, budget number we have, whether we have one for six hundred fifty thousand or six hundred thirty-two, two thousand like last year.
But the utility to be probably borrowing as a business to help offset that more often and.
That's, that's the thing, is the people should have.
Agree with Zach, Zach says that's how utilities operate. They have to, because they're not, they're only regulated to have so much return on their investments, so they have to borrow on any kind of bigger projects.
And that's exactly what Shelley is saying, but in twenty sixteen, when we were told, and I, we were sitting here, when they told us that this is what we were gonna have to do, and we, nothing was done with it after that. So I'm gonna tell you that that huge number there, that negative, and I'd be interested to see some of it, but I think a lot of it is on the village, because they never, they never borrowed to fund their project and still expected Vanguard to do the project, and then we just book, bookwrote it, and still, you know, took the money out of general fund and hey, to get whatever work needed to be done. But then kept recording it on the book and just kept bringing it in, right? So, this number might, might be very accurate, I don't know, cause I agree with Mitch about getting some of those other bills. But some of that is the village's board's fault for not doing what they were recommended to do in twenty sixteen. Then that's probably where some of that number comes from, because it's gonna just keep carrying every year until we can book it out. And the way that we should have booked it out was to get that borrowing back then and clean it out, and then have that separate system. When you first started separating them and moving everything separated like it should have been from the beginning, and it wasn't, we didn't borrow enough money at that point to clear it.
When we borrowed, we borrowed enough to pay the old stuff.
Yes, not enough to clear it, to bring it, yeah. So that's completely gonna be on the village board's fault.
Well, and frankly, if an electric utility is designed to make money, if it's grand right, I mean, you are a hundred percent, I hate to say it, a regulated monopoly. I mean, there's, yes, we're regulated by the PSC, but you provide the right numbers and everything that you're doing correctly, which Zach and everybody is, I mean, that, you shouldn't be losing money. And you look at, that's why eighty-two municipalities in our state still have municipal electric utilities. It's a moneymaker farm.
And the other side of it is, is if we'd done the borrowing for those projects and we came into those rate cases, that would have been included, we probably would have gotten a higher rate of return.
Well, we did get nailed then too, got nailed cause we weren't right, and that's why we had the problem with the PCS, because we weren't recording correctly back then.
Way back then, yeah, because when Zach came in, we had to go back, we went back to.
And so then it, that's a PCS, that, or, yeah, PCS, that, oh, you got it, borrow, not.
We had to correct.
Now we're like, every single thing you do, and we're gonna ride on you. And they've just been riding. They've just been riding, and we totally had it coming.
Well, I know we went back and recapitized everything, that, that, that's another thing too, you know, the expense, like, as far as Vanguard, if there's zero projects to put, you know, any of our time to, I mean, that's strictly an expense, and you really can't put that back into your rate base. That's why it's important to cap, do capital projects. So we do everything we can, like, even on a, on a maintenance item, if all of a sudden, you know, we got a, a cutout or a, which is a switch or something that needs to be fixed on a maintenance item, that we make sure when we do our time and our material, it's classified as a capital. And there's some requirements on capital proj, or capital items. So even though it's not really a project, but we try to capitalize every little bit we can, because it shows that you guys are investing in your system rather than putting it strictly to an expense, then you might be able to explain how that goes a little better as well, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's fine, it's just, like we kinda touched on earlier, putting everything to expense, then on your income statement, it's not gonna look very good, cause you're having to pay for every expense with the revenues that you're making that year versus depreciating and recovering your expenses that way, so. And you don't earn any rate of return on expenses either, so the more you capitalize, the more you earn as well, so.
But if you were talking about the budgets, that's not, we don't see those anyway, really, right? We don't see.
You don't see the difference between.
Yeah, right, I don't, I understand, yes, you have them, you have them, you don't, yes, you do. But that doesn't deal with me saying, this is what our budget's gonna be for this year. I would expect Shaun to come and say, this is, these are the projects we wanna do, and then we go off of that and then know that, like, like, some of these funds are just fixed, and then in general wages, those are just fixed costs, right? Uh, most of those are just fixed costs, and I don't think any of us are questioning those fixed costs, right? Like, health insurance, liability, I don't think we're questioning those, is that, right? We all know that you have to have it to run, and that's not, I don't think any of us are questioning that. So I'm not really sure why there wasn't a budget last year. I don't know.
A hundred years old either, right?
Well, so last year, so here's some of the history, Mitch and I have talked about it. When I came on board, I put the utility budgets together, cause I don't know if the village ever had a utility budget for any one of them at, at that point. And the village board approved it, and then at one point, Pat says, you know what, this should go to the Public Works and Utilities Commission for approval. So Public Works would go through those budgets and do an approval. And then last year, Fock and the mid, she says, no, it should be.
Should be a board thing.
It should be a board decision, which, you know what, it could be either way, but if that's what he wants, let's get it going. We get it in front, we, I've been asking, we gotta get this in front of the village board, but last year did not get approved by any committee. And went with the proposed budget for water, sewer, and electric of twenty-one. We are in twenty-two, we don't wanna see that same situation.
Right, no, I agree with that.
I, I didn't think a committee should approve a full budget.
You know what, I'm on the board.
So that's why.
We just gotta get it done.
Yeah, okay, thank you, cause then I was thrown off when they, when you decided to take it, cause I was sure we did it.
Yep, you did, the village board did do it for a while.
And so, where do we go from here?
Good question. I guess that's why we're here together, right?
What do you recommend?
Well, I'd like to understand all the, all the numbers. Um, and I, what's the best way to do that?
Well, I think.
More sessions, obviously.
Right, and we need a working session, right? Okay, okay, this is what we're doing this time. We're gonna take those numbers out, and then we'll have all the material, cause I'm gonna tell you honestly, some of these numbers are just bad. You know, um, the treasurer's report here, and I see your differences, and I think your differences are from the, it's not really so much, your differences are, is that the checkbook differences?
From the electric utility.
Are you looking at month-to-month per numbers?
Yeah, I'm just looking at her numbers.
From month to month, and that's what you've created?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess, you know, we need to go through that, I think, a little more, cause I'm there about those numbers. So I'm kinda concerned, cause I haven't looked at that for anybody else, I mean, those other numbers. So, thank you for that, a little more forward.
My only concern is, like, none of us are utility accountants, and that is such a different beast, and we try to understand it the best we can, and there is just so much to it. I mean, Shelley does multiple different things. I mean, it is not, I, these guys that are utility accountants, that are very, very good at it, except for Bridget. You know, they know, I'll look at our numbers, as long as we provide them with the correct information, the correct reports, that they can, I mean, they can decipher things out. And if there's something wrong in this, which I think, I think there is, our gut feeling is, there's something wrong. I mean, it, something's up. I think we need to have somebody, a third party, look at this. Look at our numbers, look at, look at our.
Well, I was headed with.
Look at our P C A C. I mean, Mr. Shelley, when you come to the P C A C, when you pull the report for a P C A C, are you going from the beginning of the month or the end of the month?
The first of the month. So what it, what we look at is now, right now, end of the month, uh, whatever she's done with all the meter entries, we do a report that shows the total kilowatt sales from the meter reads. And we look at that, plus we look at the Alliant Energy bill, and we see that there's a difference in the kilowatt sales from what we have and from what they have. I don't know if that's line loss, and I don't know what that is, but that's what the P C A is calculated off of, is that difference. We put it into the Public Service Commission, has a template form that we have to enter those numbers into. That's what calculates the.
One month, we had a forty-four percent increase. We, we bought more power one month than we, there, I should say, we sold.
Sold power than we bought.
I know.
Thought I brought, that's not right. I mean, that should be immediate, like, whoa, something's not right here.
So there was.
But, but when we're calculating.
There was, that are.
No, it's not our.
But so what it is, you know, the Alliant bill is from mid-month to mid-month.
And we should be pulling the report off.
May be off a couple of days from that though, too. I mean, we, we don't always hit it on the same day Alliant has run.
But it's not right if you, but if we're pulling the report off the beginning of the month to the end of the month, that's not billing right either. It should be that billing period.
It is the billing period.
But the, say, because they bill it, if they're reading, Alliant reads on the eighteenth, Brian Hood was telling us a little bit about this, they go off the eighteenth.
Right.
The month, to the eighteenth of the month, but we're pulling the report up, beginning to end of the month.
But our meter reads are being entered from when they run it in the middle of the month, so if the guys are out reading fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, that's what's going in the system. It's from mid-month to mid-month, so we can line up with Alliant Energy. It's just that we can't print that report until right now, till they're all in it. Does that make any sense?
So if we would print it to match the Alliant date, are you saying that?
We couldn't read it in one day, though.
Yeah.
So that's why.
It's always gonna.
And we, we understand that.
It's an only day thing, yeah.
Yeah, there's no way in Black Earth to get it exactly off, because we have. Right. Fine, we understand that. It's just an issue of, are we pulling the report on the right dates to reflect the right usage? Because it doesn't seem right that we would ever be purchasing less power, purchasing, oh, which way is it go, purchasing more power than we're selling.
Yeah, selling more power than purchasing. We're selling more than we're buying, which shouldn't happen. That should be like a red flag right there, or something's not right. Especially that one, way off, you know?
I can look at the report, because I can see, and just to make a double.
I had it, I don't know where it went.
I had it too, I don't know where.
Wait, what I'm saying is that the report that's pulled, so like for June, it will say six one to six thirty, but the Alliant bill is from like May fifteenth to June fifteenth, like.
Oh, so it could be, you could get a bill at the wrong time for that. I see what you're saying.
I mean, that, that one.
So, like, what you're saying, Alliant bills have been pulled since.
Yeah, so we go from what eighteen.
Yeah, but our report for power is pulled like the first through the thirtieth in the system.
Right.
So let me ask you, if you're addressing our report to show mid-month to mid-month, that our first.
And would that change?
So why, why, can I ask, why aren't we doing mid-month as we're balancing with the.
Where you found it?
The Civic set it up for us in our system.
So we need to change it?
I'll look, that's why I just said, I'll look at it and see how it is set up.
Cause I'm agreeing with that, we've got, we've got it about the same dates. I mean, we can say, okay, well, we're within two or three days, but we can't be fifteen days.
What got me about the forty-four percent is, the next month, it didn't correct itself. That's what didn't make sense to me. You know, if, if that happens, and you get a bill, and you, you sold forty-four, you, the next month, you should see that. If you don't, there's a problem, and I didn't see it, and I'm trying to find it.
Okay, cause that's call the Public Service Commission, cause we've been pretty high the last month, and our tariff has specific language that if we go over a certain amount two months in a row, we need to call them and adjust it. So they've already been alerted, cause like, in fact, we're gonna be high to the third month. So I don't know what'll happen there, cause we've never been in that situation.
And Shelley, while you're at it, maybe, just look, compare your line loss report to your power cost adjustment for last year, because I was trying to look at your P C A C just to see if it seemed like it was correct, cause purpose power didn't seem quite right, and it didn't match your line loss report. So you've got a difference there, and I still think that you might want to just make sure you're looking at the right line loss report when you do something to it.
Do you have the numbers on the line loss report, both the other one?
Our request adjustment.
Yeah, I was comparing those two, and they should be the same if they were.
You have that sheet? I can't find mine.
Yeah.
Did you see the sheet we're talking about?
I didn't.
Line loss and the.
No, I don't have.
Can we pass that around just real quick, so they can see?
I'll find my scribble.
I had it.
Don't get it, I printed.
It's probably on my desk at work yet, cause that's where anything else is.
I don't know that I saw.
Huh?
I don't know.
All right, so that's.
I thought you sent it to me.
This is what they are using, sorry.
Yep, that's the one that you had sent us.
You sent it, yeah.
Oh.
I can.
So, we went, we, we used that and sold that.
Wait, differences on the end though, percentage.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I was trying to lock my line through.
That's why we're sold more than what we.
Yep, so then we sold.
Well, I expect to see the difference made up the month afterwards, right?
I'm just concerned too, because, I mean, with the P C A C, it is tricky. It, I mean, it, but like, cause we did have an error in eighteen, right, on the P C A C?
We did.
That, that was a pretty good.
So is that where you're smelling the rat?
Huh?
Well, he doesn't even know if he smelled a rat.
I don't, I don't know, it's a take in that just doesn't make sense to me, I don't know.
I'm not so sure.
I'm sorry, Mitch.
I'm trying to figure out how we break this down, so we easily understand it, to make a good decision. And there's so much involved in it that, um.
Well, one of the things that I'm thinking is that if I run a detailed ledger on every electrical account in our system from month to month, and we split that in, that would be.
How do you do what?
Call the detailed ledger for everything, yeah, it's every single account for the electric fund, that's your assets, your liabilities, your revenues and expenses, and just pick it in month to month. It will be quite a bit of work, but it's everything we've got, is the bit.
But does that lead up simply to where?
No.
See, that's, that's the problem.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that the numbers, that Lydia has matched the numbers that the village has. I mean, I understand.
We need to sit down and go through what you got, cause I don't know where she's not matched, and that doesn't give us an opportunity to look and.
Yeah, that's fair, right.
It could have been, you know, there could be an account code error.
Well, okay, here's another thing, though, because we've already been told by our auditors that our internal controls were shipped, right? I mean, that's, they told us every year in our audit, if you read that first report, our internal controls are not good. So, um, the numbers that were given at every board meeting, you know, are. What's there, what is, what's going through for the month, and that, to avoid a repeat.
Wait, the numbers we're giving are a month off, though.
Right, so I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that, you don't, you don't, that's a lot of work.
I, well, I know, but to look at it, you have to look at the last one.
Right, you have to look at, and sometimes I like, I don't make sense, I'm sorry. So I think this error, we can figure that out with an internal control, so that it's not as difficult, Shelley, as you think, as to run all those ledgers. I think. Date, you run the, you run the, you run your report, Shelley runs her report, and you do a random audit of a number of an account. And you say, does it match, does it not match, why doesn't it match, why does it match? Random audits of all of those accounts should figure out if it's not being recorded properly.
Well, I have other concerns too, right?
Right.
I, I'm concerned that our, our, this Bridget's with what I've read from the P S, P S C, if she done a good enough job, cause the things they've gone back and found, it's pathetic.
Right, and I'm the one who had to go through all of these to find them specifically and work with our auditors, so.
I almost think personally that we should bring somebody from the outside to compare everybody's and inspect what Bridget did.
That is exactly what I asked you ten minutes ago, is what you wanted to say.
Well, I, I think we're all.
I'm in, I agree.
I think we're all thinking along the same lines. If it's that frickin' complicated.
Thank you.
Well, and then they could spend the time, here's your incomes, this is what's in it.
Okay, but isn't this Bridget's job?
The what?
She, isn't this Bridget's job, isn't that what she is, as a utility clerk?
No, no. Bridget used to work for the Public Service Commission. She started in the water division, went to the electric division, went back to water, and left.
But you have someone.
She's with an a, agency.
Okay, she's with the P.
No, she's not with the P S C any longer. She is like with an engineering firm, working as a consultant with them.
She's hired to do the reading.
Okay, but do you have some, do you know someone that's.
Well, I thi, I think it should be somebody that neither of them know.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, if there's a company, we can go find, it's just there.
Sure.
And I agree, then we're.
I'll.
But.
Yeah.
Ella, so Ella's.
I think it should be somebody that.
Your utility is in such shambles, and structurally so unsound, but yet they let you borrow two million dollars.
Well, they said we're in good shape.
Yeah, I, so, and, and also, you know, you look at your cash, I mean, if you're gonna look at this as like a cash flow side of things, I mean, they, they put you into a, a, you know, they, they borrowed for a tenure instead of going to say twenty, and it totally lighten up your cash flow. and it totally lined up your cash flow. So I guess, I don't, I'm curious.
Who would you recommend?
I don't know. I don't know who's all out there, to be honest with you. That's why, I literally don't know who's there. I would love Zach. I'd do Zach in a heartbeat. I mean, Zach had a hundred percent of this place on a straight and narrow. He is, is very detailed. He digs into shit. He really understands. But he doesn't do it anymore. Yeah, he works for us. But I don't think, I can ask him if he'd be willing to do it, but-
Well, that, or maybe he knows the someone.
Or at least he'd be able to step in and help.
Yeah, I'd rather it be somebody that's not involved with this right now.
No, I would do one more if I had a hand.
All right. Oh, no, that's, yeah, that's, it is right, and it's that one on top, you're not gonna get.
I'm not gonna get that one.
So, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. So is that what you want the motion to be?
Yes.
I need the motion that we bring a third party in to review Vanguard versus the village books to make sure that everything is, or is everything is being coded as it should be, and placed as it should be.
And then check our PSC.
And then check, and then check that.
I think it's more, I, I, I think it's more, review entire cash flow. I mean, that's-
Well, I think we need, we need, we need bits.
Yeah.
That's, that's my motion, is make a bit, to get the bit.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Hey, under the discussion, then-
Any discussion?
Um, let's make sure that this entity hasn't worked with any of the-
That's, that's exactly, it's gotta be independent.
In the motion.
Yeah.
Has not worked with all, any of us.
Yeah.
Agreed.
More discussion? Do you wanna blend your motion to that with that?
You want me to?
I can shift.
All right, I'll amend the motion. Did it be a third party that has not had any contact with Vanguard Electric or the village of Black Earth in, in any type of deal, or in major, right?
Yeah.
Or in major.
Unless, unless we have to go with, say, Ellers or somebody which they have contact with us. I mean, that's-
I'll amend my second.
There's not too many people that do this, that's the downside. So I don't know. Last one. I'll talk to Zach and see if there's anybody you recommend.
All right. Any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. opposed? All right. And we can go from there. We, we probably, hopefully, we know something like word beat.
Well, I think we should figure out, too, we need to have working-
We've got a bunch of stuff that everything wants.
Fewer differences.
No kidding.
So, we, we need to have like a, I would like to, I guess, I don't know what projects Sean wants to work on for the next, for this year, so I can't give you any budget information, anything that I'm gonna have anything to say about, right?
Well, I don't think we're taking a decision until we-
Are you holding it till we get that?
I think so. I think we have.
Hundred percent. We're, we have, we have, we're not working on any projects. Only time that we're spending here is in the maintenance, and that's about it. So, let's.
And with that being said, I think we should skip number five until we know what's going on. No reason to.
Well, here's the thing, we already borrowed for this project, and-
I understand.
So.
Yeah. We don't have PSC premieres, you know.
Don't we have to have a substitution? We've been working on a substitution since I remember.
We do, but we better know where we're at before we keep going.
I'm not gonna disagree, so, me neither. Well, I'm gonna kinda disagree with that. And I agree that we need to know where we're at, but I'm also gonna say that we have to have this substitution, because I'm telling you, if we, you know, we discussed it way back then, and if we lost power, did the backflow ever get set up with me though? No.
No, but we have a transformer order.
Yeah, we do have a transformer order, and-
Okay, that's in your chest.
Yep.
Now, did that legal get sent over by way?
They came back with my revisions, my, my comments that I had, and then I think Eric sent it over. He said, you can have an update. I ran in the middle, so probably.
Are you following what I'm saying?
No, I know exactly what you're saying, but it's hard to approve money for something if you don't even know the state of your-
But we're not approving money. We're approving money for an appraisal.
Right.
Because the appraisal has to be done one day.
And the money for the appraisal to come out of the borrowed funds that are-
Don'ts don't sound very true. So, they're pretty much out of it.
But, like I said, the money for the appraisal is sitting in the segregated funds we borrowed for the project.
No, absolutely.
So I'm gonna say that we go ahead with the appraisal, at least go ahead with the appraisal.
What appraisal? Which one?
This is the, this is the booster, booster.
This one's wrong.
Yes.
Right, that's what we're gonna do.
I'm okay with that.
That's not an electric substation plan appraisal.
Yeah.
It's just for the appraisal.
Okay.
Because they're just gonna take us long if we wait.
Yep.
It will, it'll take us a while.
Not the house a lot.
The only question I would have with this, though, is that if the Don's property is off the table, that negates twenty-five hundred dollars of this proposal. If we're gonna do that parcel as an appraisal.
I think if they're, if they're out, next, because you ain't, you're not condemning it.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think, I think if, if Don's, Don's-
If Don change his mind, we'll know.
Do not do an appraisal on, because there's no chance that we are going, I'm not gonna condemn it.
I don't know where that came from, yeah.
Yep.
And that's the twenty-five hundred separate values for each parcel.
Right, right.
So we're just gonna, we just wanna do the twenty-five hundred.
On eminent domain.
Oh, no, we're not.
But he just had surgery, we talked to him, so he could change his mind. He said he'd get back to me someday. Yeah, he just had his-
Oh, yeah, you would get nothing.
No. Yeah, I got to sit and talk to him.
Well, if we're gonna do that, then we, is that, was, that was the only location? I thought there was another location.
Don's had, the Don's property, there was two parcels.
Okay.
We can approve it as a book, I mean, we-
Well, you also have Johnson.
If we-
If we do, okay.
If you're doing something like that, right?
Well, you gotta, you gotta tell me, because right now, this was set up based on the Don's.
I know, it's all the water.
Okay, so then we're-
Okay, the property we're looking at is adjacent to the current substation?
Yeah, wasn't there some?
The one to the left, right? Yeah, the blue, the house.
Yep.
Or in the ground.
Yep. Does it, what are we, does it pay to appraise the Johnson area?
Huh?
Because he actually thought about it.
Is that over there?
I mean, I don't think it hurt, but I mean, yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have more costs involved trying to bring power into town, getting across the creek and stuff. So, I mean, ideally, ideally, the house would be number one.
There's advantages to that.
The advantage is if a tornado hits you, you don't lose both power stations.
Right.
Right. But there's also the, the, we, we're gonna have to expand at some point, right?
But then, we don't have enough money if we put it over there, or-
Or, yeah, or rips.
For Johnson, yeah.
I asked them.
He does have, he said he has property inside the village, Leland.
Who?
Johnson. Is that, is that the same property?
It goes right up to Leland's driveway, some of it. Right? Some of that field there is Johnson.
Oh, you mean that one, yeah.
Yeah.
And you still have to come across the creek.
I think it's technically.
Because he's willing.
Well, he, he's debating.
No.
Yeah. You think he's willing? Okay.
He's willing to discuss.
Yeah.
Whenever you have out there.
Well, I think we should, I think we should assess it.
And he said he has five acres inside.
Yeah, he does.
This is where it is. But he doesn't, this is, this is Johnson's here.
So where are you looking?
Next.
Uh, well, where were you guys looking? In here, right?
That was, that's the only one that's basically, we're able to move out of this one.
Right.
And so that, that's-
How many years are we talking here?
Well, one time he was, but the floodplain kinda screwed it up.
Well, ideally, up here would've been perfect, but this is, you know, the other option.
Yeah.
And this is?
This is Leland's here. But he's got this, this is Johnson right up to the driveway.
So here's-
Oh, really? Johnson has a piece over here? But that's in floodplain, right?
So Johnson's property comes up here and comes over here. This, this is Leland.
Yeah. But Johnson comes over here.
Yeah.
Is there a spot, is there a-
Because of the flood, floodplain, we're screwed.
Johnson runs completely in the floodplain?
Yeah, except for this piece right here, which he has in the village, which is the piece that we're in.
Okay, because this piece is not, this is all, then, so Johnson goes up and comes right into floodplain? That's what you're telling me, doesn't it?
Except for this piece.
Can't put a lot of station in floodplain?
They flow. They flow. They put houses in floodplains.
So what's the other assets, Tom?
Uh, we talked about rips, but that, he has no interest in selling.
Which one?
How about the, how about the one behind the-
Mr.?
Huh?
Don runs that knowingly, but it's all-
You mean, over here, but we don't really care.
But it's not, it has no flipping way any-
The sun?
The sun, so that's-
What the hell did they, that Tom, you're saying, I mean, they weren't, I know they obviously weren't interested, but I thought there was something.
The housing over there, meaning that we were gonna be on the backside.
That's what it was, yep. Well, I thought they were gonna sell us land one time behind the water tower for something.
Be a nice place for development.
You could be looking at that.
So it wouldn't hurt to do the Johnson property as long as it's right there. And we've already got two in it.
Well, you, yeah.
They're not the Don's, but the Johnson's?
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we approve the Johnson property and the sixteen, eighteen Blue Mountain Street for appraisal.
Sorry, what was it?
Who's talking to Bruce to turn that up? You?
Uh, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, sorry.
Discussion, there it is.
The price, do we think it's gonna be about the same?
The what?
The price, the twenty-five hundred, that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the appraisal fee for the area, so.
Sean, what I was gonna ask you is, don't we have something on the Johnson property when we looked at it originally from Forester?
Um, I think-
They'll need a map?
Yeah, I think we do.
To submit to Forester back.
I, I've seen a map of it.
That's a little extra all that stuff, I can't.
Because then at some point, you're gonna have to talk to the Forester.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to say, but, okay.
Well, and they have already.
Okay.
So they've already been in contact with Bruce through Forester.
Tucking it, just making sure, okay.
Okay, so, just so I have it straight, we're gonna go ahead and have the property that's next to the substation assessed and the Johnson property assessed.
Correct.
I thought we were, the guy was pretty firm on the price that he wanted for the place.
The house, that was the house?
Yeah, he doubled what he-
Or what he wanted for it. I know, but so is he gonna, because we get an appraisal, he's gonna lower it?
No, the appraisal counts out what was immediately offered.
I think we're throwing good money after bad.
All right, what do you think, what do you think we should do?
I just think we're throwing good money after bad, trying to go after that piece next to the substation. It's, it's-
The housing, you mean it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one that you want, so much?
What, um, what was the price difference at, at the Johnson? There was more cost.
Because we gotta bring in, we gotta bring in more of our circuits into town, yes, definitely a higher cost.
Correct.
I don't remember what the cost was off the top of my head.
Do that with an extension cord?
Kind of the same thing. Just a little bigger.
Okay, so more of a cost, but so, hypothetically, if we decided to, to develop out that way, it's easier for us to develop out that way, if you already got-
I'll work with you.
That's-
Go all the way.
Oh, Johnson's way?
KP.
KP way?
Yeah.
Would it be cheaper than once we decide to, if we decided to develop that way? Would it be cheaper to get electrical, whatever, out that way?
I would say no, just because, eh, even with the development out there, I mean, look at, look at where our substation is now. We feed out to rips. Plus, we feed damn near to, um, Tiger Basin. So I, we would be able to get the power out there no matter where we're at. Plus, we have a big three-phase line that goes out there that we can tap off to go feed any kind of development that would go there. So.
So there's not an advantage?
There's really not, as far as load-wise, it's-
But they're right.
It's usually after you run one circuit out, all the way out there, another one, rather than running three more into town like we would if we would have to put a substation out there. And there is, there is a big cost difference by putting a substation out there.
And is there a benefit to put it out there where it's not next door?
Like Mitch said, it is not right next door to it, but I mean, there's preventives. I mean, there's good and bad to both of it.
How was your big drawback, wasn't it, Scott, putting it right next to it?
Mm-hmm. I mean, redundancy is, it was, it was, all of a sudden, it was a big deal. And then when they found out they were gonna be a lot, it was gonna be a lot more money, we got screwed. Oh, I felt like I was sitting behind a shipwreck, you know, when they came in with that second proposal. So I'd like to see it in another location, not next to the current substation. And I guess that's, that's how I feel about it.
I, I don't care where we put the damn thing. I just want to take the substation. I mean, it, it-
Well, just with the chance of eminent domain in the background, I mean, it's, it's ugly business. And it's gonna, it's gonna head that way. And if we decide to go ahead and-
And that's a pretty popular family, too.
Yes, it is. And I am not taking that shit store by myself, sorry.
So, I mean, let's go ahead with it. I'd say let's go ahead with the Johnson.